Grand with the Department of Natural Resources for land acquisition. This is a view from the west end of the lot. The car is not part of the site, but it's a two and a quarter acre lot at 605 South Main Street, just south of the Creekside Hearth and on the south side of the north branch of the Clinton River. And there are two buildings that are currently on the site, and there might be a closer picture, that better picture that shows what those look like.
Talking about this one?
This is an aerial view of the site. There we go.
Okay.
So there's a building that's closest to the river, and then this slightly larger building here. Both of the buildings have been vacant for many years at this point and have not weathered the storms as well as one might have hoped. I know initially when this idea was broached with our friends at the Parks Board, there was a thought that maybe one or both of these buildings might be able to be used for storage purposes because that's part of their project plans for the next year or two is to acquire a shed or have a building that they can house a lot of their equipment in for storage purposes. I don't know that either one of those buildings will suffice without a lot of improvement aesthetically. Both buildings are locked up where you can't gain access without removing the locks. And so that's obviously something we would have to work with the owners going forward to be able to see firsthand what the interior of the buildings look like. So the front part of this parcel is vacant, as you can see here. Part of our strategy for acquiring this property is to be able to have access off of M53. This is the old ingress egress to the site when it was used for implement purposes many years ago and maybe some small machining as well. This area is not in the floodplain. The rest of the property on this half is in the floodplain, and we would anticipate that we would be able to do some parking area over here. It would be gravel so that we're not dealing with any type of runoff off of asphalt. Okay, Kim. This is just showing the park area as you go further back on the property. And you can see these are the tennis courts. I believe that's the Lions Club there. Eyes are not deceiving me. This is our DPW yard here. This is Water Street, and this is the Creekside Hearth Business Establishment. And so you can see the river that's running along here. When we had the big rain last month, this area flooded out because it's a natural floodplain, which is not uncommon for park areas to be established in floodplain areas that would have some natural flooding after heavy rains. But the property that we're interested in acquiring actually abuts to the park further up here. And the, there's been some work that's been done by, I assume, volunteers of the Parks Board that have cleared out a lot of the property on the far west end of the property on the south side of the river. And so the, the, the goal would be, over the course of time, to develop some sort of non-motorized pathway or some sort of walking trail along the river. I had the chance to walk the property yesterday, and there's a lot of woods once you get back past the buildings. And so there's, you know, some natural forestry there and shrubs, and it could be a very scenic walkway along the river once it's developed. The fact that there is some river frontage, I was in Lansing today for the Capcom Conference and was able to talk with representatives from DNR as well as Eagle. The DNR folks said that we would gain extra points because we do have a river and that the goal would be a walking trail. And the fact that it currently abuts a community park would get us extra points as well for the application. One of the concerns that was raised when I talked with representatives from Eagle was that they said there might be some permitting that might be required because of the proximity of the proposed walking trail to the river. I'm assuming that's because of soil disruption. And they indicated one of our council members might have some knowledge about that. But one of the other suggestions that came forward from our discussion last month was that we would want to do a Phase One Environmental Site Plan of the property. In walking the property, an individual who had some knowledge of the history of the property did point out to me some areas where there was the appearance of some dumping of soil, some scrap metals. There was actually a converter that was laying out in the open behind the buildings in the tree line area. I'd say it's about a 10 by 20 foot area that might be suspect, that would have to be checked out. But one of the pluses I learned from the friends from Eagle was that you can apply and they will perform an environmental Phase One or a Phase Two Environmental Site Plan at no cost. So that's a plus as well, too. The, as I mentioned last month, the assessor has this property valued, true cash value at $87,500. We would plan to apply for a grant at a maximum award of $100,000. It's a 75% reimbursement from the state, and we would only be liable for 25% of the, of the cost of acquiring the property. And there's been a high percentage of applications that have been approved by the DNR for land acquisition. Is that our last picture, Kim? I believe it might be. There might be a, yeah, that's a an area that's showing the Creekside Hearth, trying to give you a better view of where the park property is going eastward here. It's the river here. So just wanted to provide that as some background information for council as well as for the public, if there's any questions or comments that we would receive. And I'm at your disposal, Mr. President, to try to help answer any questions that do come up.
Anybody have points to raise with regard to the presentation? Just for the benefit of the public, this issue as far as National Resource Trust Funds is going to be addressed as regular agenda item number seven, Resolution 22 hyphen zero three hyphen zero two. So we will be discussing it this evening. Okay, any comments from the, from the public? Looks like not. Okay. All right, let's call the regular meeting to order. Please rise with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, clear and just as one.
Additions, deletions, changes to the proposed agenda for this evening. Are there any? A minute. Roll call.
President Schneider.
Present.
President Proton Dyke. Councilmember Alec.
Present.
Councilmember Colka.
Present.
Councilmember Feldman.
Councilmember Glasser.
Councilmember Stuffer.
Present.
Communications. So first, it's with communication from our good friends at Great Lakes Water Authority, water charges. Always happy to hear from them. So I looked at the breakdown and it's a little bit complex. Ms. Kiesler, can you give us a little bit of detail? I saw 3.4% increase, 3.7% increase. Not sure what it all means. I figure you're the numbers person, so maybe you can.
Essentially, it's a 3.4% increase.
Across the board?
Across, across the board for our municipality.
Right, right, okay. So is there, is it even possible to put in approximate, what it will cost the average homeowner, water user?
That I do not know off the top of my head. For, if we use the same water usage in the last 12 months, it would be at an approximate 2.7% increase in our cost alone.
And I think as the communication from GLWA indicates, it's effective what, July, something, and billings that would go out August 1?
Yep.
So it won't hit till then, but it will be hit.
Correct. And also, I just want you to make note, if I can find where. Okay, on page seven of your packet, if you look on line number 16 and 17, we do get charged part of the Flint Debt Service for KWA. That was the agreement they had with Flint when all of that took place. But number 17 in particular, it's, we're being charged for the Highland Park bad debt adjustments. And every single meeting that we attend, it always gets brought up that just because they don't pay their bill, why do all the other municipalities have to pay for it?
And that is on our regular agenda items as well.
Exactly, yep.
Number, number four, regular agenda item. I look at that, that whole topic, it's rather incredible. But, you know, we don't mind carrying Highland Park on our backs, right? Okay, also in communication, Elmont Lions Club Annual Easter Candy Hunt, Saturday, April 16, 2022, 11:00 AM sharp at the Elmont Community Park. There will be candy, hot dogs, and picture taking with the Easter Bunny. Who wants to dress up? Anybody? No pets allowed. Okay, so that's that communication. Then we have, let's see. Invitation from the Emily Masonic Lodge 295, Masters Wardens and Members of, honoring the Lodge's 150th Birthday, Saturday, May 11, 2022, at 11:00 AM at the Elmont Masonic Center Building on 730 Dryden Road in Elmont, RSVP April night. So that's happening. Other council members may or may not have seen this, but I started, I mentioned it, and I think it's fairly important. So we had a communication from Row, as we have frequent communications from them, but I thought this was particularly important. Row is indicating to us, note, with costs increasing for nearly everything, it is important for local units of government to ensure that fees assessed for permits address the cost for processing them. Do you hear that, Jim? If your community has not reviewed its fee structure recently, it is likely due for a significant update during this session, and they're having a seminar essentially, workshop. Row staff will provide examples of fee structures and discuss an approach to performing an update. And I don't know whether our manager or clerk treasurer intending, intend to participate. It's, they call it Spring Community Education Series, and it's April 19 of 2022 from 7 to 9. At least we should be paying attention to that thing. Raise fees, but everything is all volatile. And speaking of volatility, have we taken any note so far? Note, it hasn't been very long since the invasion happened in Europe. As far as gasoline costs, because we have a police department and DPW, et cetera, et cetera. And so have you noticed a significant uptake in cost?
We haven't gotten this month's bill yet, so I'm sure it's going to be quite significant.
Yeah, I mean, it's something I would imagine we're gonna have to pay attention to. At this point in time, it looks like this, I can't call it an event, situation is gonna go on for an extensive period of time. But of course, it's so volatile that we have no clue what's gonna happen. So the oil prices went bananas and went up to, just a few days ago, $140 a barrel, which is maybe the highest ever. And this morning, it was down to $99 a barrel. But, you know, we just don't know. So I, it's probably something we're gonna have to pay attention to, I would think, and how it's gonna affect our present budget and upcoming budget. And of course, we don't have any big expense items coming up, do we? For, oh, well, so, so I'd raise that. Any members of council want to participate in that education series? Got the information on it, probably in your email, and I've got it as well. So moving on to regular meeting minutes for the March 1 meeting. Let's see. In communications, where are we here? The liquor license transfer paragraph, it was the consensus, second line, sentence in the beginning, in the middle, it was the consensus of council, probably who put the words, at that, yeah, that it did not. Please, thank you. Okay, regular agenda item number three. Third line down. Oh, yes, okay. So beginning of line, line three, summer intern program, be utilized to document, it says to infiltration, probably should strike the word to, doesn't make sense there, please. Thank you. And then comment time. In Mr. Dyke's language, second line down. So there's a sentence, this is President Protem Dyke's comment in their council comment time, beginning in the middle of line two. He's suggested, this is created, I presume that word should be creating, a rating? Okay. Okay, so this will type those. Anybody else with regard to the minutes, corrections, objections, questions, anything? Okay. General fund. Major streets, local streets. Parkinson Recreation Fund. Downtown Development Authority Fund. Water Tower Debt. Sewer Fund. Water Fund. Equipment Fund. Gets known by her after a while. Payroll Register Report. Water Report. TPW Monthly Report for February. Wastewater Treatment Monthly Report for February. Police Report. Ordnance Enforcement Officer Report. Building Permit Report, AKA Construction Code Authority. And Financial Position Report. If there are no comments, issues to discuss, entertain a motion.
Support.
Motion made by President Protem Dyke, murderer, Councilmember Stuffer, to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion or discussion at all? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Objections? Unanimously approved. Now is the time, audience, for public comment time for any issue that is on our regular agenda for this evening. Is there any public comment this evening? Sir?
Hello. My name is Stephen Powell, and I am here to make a public comment regarding the topic of the water main relocation in the Kalin subdivision. I'm the new property owner of Lot 133 in the Kalin subdivision. My wife, Samantha Powell, and I closed on a construction loan to build our first house here in Elmont a month ago on February 16, 2022. We purchased Lot 133 from Mr. Jim Novak of Novak Construction, who is the builder for our house. After seeing no construction progress on our lot for a few weeks, I called the village manager, Mr. David Trent. Mr. Trent was very helpful when explaining the situation, how our water main was mistakenly installed on Lot 133 years ago, when it should have been installed on the adjacent parcel along with a future road. I understand that mistakes happen, and the village council is already diligently working to remedy this issue. I strongly encourage the village council to take the necessary steps to resolve this as quickly as possible to avoid any further delays to the construction of our home. Thank you very much for your time and consideration on this matter. My family and I are excited and looking forward to moving into the Elmont community.
Thank you for your presentation. Yeah, we have previously been informed of the position that you've been put in, which obviously is not a favorable one. Yeah, it's most unfortunate. Stuff happens, unfortunately, but yeah, we will be addressing it this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. And yeah, any further comments, feel free to come back. Any other public comment this evening with regard to items on our regular agenda? Be nothing further, regular agenda item number one, Kingsbrook Penalties Waiver Request.
Thank you. Thanks for having me back. I think last time I was here is back in November, and I presented to you the situation we were in with the water bills, and I presented a plan to get them paid up and then get ahead. I'm happy to say that we, we've made all of our payments to date.
Do you mind terribly just giving us your name again?
Oh, sorry. Randy Mer, Controller for Residents First, which oversees the communities, Kingsbrook Estates. So I'm happy to say that over the last four months, we've made all the payments. And the first four payments that we made, you could see them up here, the $24,000, $24,000, $25,000, and $22,000. Those are the four big payments, the larger payments, that were supposed to help us get not only caught up, but also get us ahead going forward. Now, at this point, we plan on doing the $15,000 a month going forward, and that should be about a third of the quarterly water bill that we get. That would continue to keep us ahead so that when we finally get the water bill quarter, that we're, we already have two thirds of it paid. And then the payment for that month is really just a true up, give or take, you know, $15,000. So give or take, if that will be behind day 200.
What's gonna be different, though? This has been an ongoing problem for years. I understand it hasn't been your personal problem you just started working for.
Yeah.
But there is nobody in this village that I can say I've found or heard of that has ever gotten a $16,000 break on their water bill, ever.
We're not looking for the break on the water bill. We're looking for a break on the penalties and the late fees.
Your company incurred the penalties.
Yeah.
I'll tell you, the only way I would vote to wipe that out is if you donated that $16,986 to the village at Elmont for Mrs. Kiesler to go through and help the elderly or the unfortunate in this town to pay their water bill. Since the last 10 years or approximately, those people in this town have footed the bill for the trailer park.
I mean, if I may, with all respect, in the last meeting, you had specifically said, if, you know, if you believed you would be making our payments on time, you'd be willing to forego the late fees and penalties.
I'd be willing to listen to it, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'm listening. I've led this charge all the way through since I became a council member. I just, even with the $15,000 payment, we're gonna roll in to the end of April when water bills are due, and you're still gonna owe a little bit of money, which is gonna start to occur penalties again.
Why do you feel that way?
Because you're at, we haven't given up the $16,000 yet.
Okay, assuming the $16,000 is waived, then we are, we're actually ahead, by the time the bill comes in, we'll be ahead by $28,000, and we're only gonna owe the difference on it. So at no point will we be late. In fact, we'll, like I said, we'll have paid ahead $28,000 on that bill.
Flip side of the coin, and all the points made by Councilmember Alec are valid, is that there has been a dramatic change with regard to the owners of the Mulholland Home Park taking responsibility because, as you indicate, for decades, they didn't. And built up huge, outstanding arrogances, built in excess of $100,000, which is totally unacceptable. And I suppose in part motivation, we expressed the willingness to consider waiving the penalties has pushed the park to put in a responsible plan where they will, looks pretty much stay current. And so, yeah, the question becomes, I mean, there's, there certainly is no question there's bad behavior, I think, in most of our minds, especially those that have been in council a long time, on the, as far as the owner of the park's responsibility. But looks like they, well, they have, you have a new operations manager above you, and then you're, you're new to this, they're actually taking this seriously. And so do we want to give them a reward for finally stepping up to plate and doing what they should have been doing all along? Other council members?
I just have a question for Kim. Wondering if you could just confirm the figures that were presented?
Um, wondering if you could just confirm the figures that were presented on the penalty amounts?
Yep, the, um, what that 16,986 is, if you look on your packet on page 44, it is from 21121 all the way to 21422. That's where that 16,986 comes from.
And it is correct that the two, the November and February invoices contain additional late fees because the prior penalties had not been brought current?
The way the system pays, it pays the old water sewer, water debt charges first, um, then goes and pays the penalties. So, like you said, you never get current on the current bill when you're making a payment. So that's why the interest keeps adding on.
Um, not touching the subject of the $11,511 penalties. Just dealing with the penalties that were accrued in November and February. I agree on at least those, that they were making the payments in accordance with the presented program. And so, um, if we can talk about maybe waiving those first before we tackle the 11,511, that's at least, um, my opinion on those two charges.
547492 total for those two.
I'll take your word for that.
Well, I, potential way to deal with it. And this, this is a tough one because of prior bad conduct and it looked like the beginnings of, quote, good conduct. If we follow Mindy's, um, suggestion or proposal is perhaps, um, waiving the November invoice and the February invoice and seeing how Kingsbrook does the next one, two, or three payments. And giving the opportunity to come back again with regard to 11,000. I realize it's problematic because it does continue to grow all by itself, or if we leave it sitting there, the 11,000.
Well, right now, their balance is only 390910. So if you gave them the credit of 547492, they would actually have a credit, a balance. So when they do the April payment, you know, it'll, they'll actually have a credit on their account.
Not that I mind coming here and talking to you guys, but.
Councilmembers? Tim's proposal makes a lot of sense to me. It takes, it, it's a balancing act and, um, uh, benefits both the village and the park. What do you think, Wayne? Yeah, well, Tim goes a little bit farther than Mindy, and, um, and I, actually going into this, I had the same balancing act prop of giving, giving them some sort of a break, but not the full thing. I had thoughts along those lines, and I wanna see what the rest of the council thought. Jackie, any?
So, Tim, you are saying split the 11,511?
I'm saying just get rid of November, February, because they were showing the faith.
Right.
Saying after that, a 50% of whatever the 11.
5755. Okay.
That's, yeah.
I think it's reasonable.
It's both sides. Jim, at your earpoint, I respect it, but, um, they have shown good faith, and this way, we're all helping us. It was the obvious.
Inherent message of, don't fall behind again.
If it goes back to the way it was, there will never be any differences again.
Well, absolutely, yeah. What would be the timing on the payment? What would be the expected timing on the true-up on that?
To stay current by the end of the next billing cycle, like everybody else does.
So the May invoice, uh, the April invoice that comes in, I think it's due May 10th or something like that. So on that invoice, making sure that's, of course, paid in full, but covering the, that's fair, we can cover that.
The 5755 plus what you owe. And then that should take everything down to what, a zero balance?
Zero balance.
So was that a motion, Tim?
I can make that. I'll make a motion that we waive the penalty fees. I make a motion that we waive the November, February invoice amount of 5,474.2 cents since Kingsbrook was shown good faith in their payment schedule during that time period. And also that we reduce the, um, additional, um, late fees that were due of 11,511, 511, 550%. And that Kingsbrook paid the difference of that late fee on the next billing cycle.
I support that.
Motion made by President Pro Tem Dyke, supported by Councilmember Alka. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Objections?
Aye.
Motion passes by a six to one vote. Appreciate the time tonight.
Five to one.
Okay, regular agenda item number two, Planning Commission Reappointment. So. Is Tom here this evening? Tom's not here. I'm, I'm so embarrassed because I've served with him all these years, I think, but always mispronounced his last name.
Tadejewski.
Tadejewski. So the J is silent.
Yes.
Ah, yeah, somebody told you mispronounced his name. Uh, he's, he's terrific. He, he's been the chairman for a very long time, and, um, the, uh, Planning Commission did not, did nominate him, and, um, I'm going to reappoint him, uh, to a, where am I here? Last pages. For, um, a term ending March 31, 2025, and request council's ratification.
Yeah, and I'll just add before we ratify or go to ratification that I have certain two terms I, um, find commission, and Bernie, I can attest to this, that Tom is a very dedicated, very knowledgeable, and runs one of the best meetings around. He's, he's very thorough in, in his work on planning.
Yeah.
And with that said, I'll make the motion, I'll make the motion that we ratify these of the president's appointment of Tom Tadejewski to the government. So the Planning Commission for a career transfer, I made March 30, 2025.
Support. Motion made by President Pro Tem Dyke, supported by Councilmember Alec, uh, to ratify, uh, the, um, my appointment of, uh, Mr. Tadejewski to, uh, the Planning Commission. He serves as chairperson, and, yeah, he does a terrific job. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Ratification is unanimously approved. Regular Agenda Item Number Three, Second Reading and Adoption of Ordinance 193.6. Did you, uh, Kim, did you wanna make a brief presentation?
Uh, yep, we had a first reading of the ordinance, um, 193.6 on February 15th, which was published in the Tri-City Times on February 23rd. Um, it defines the medical marijuana, uh, uses in regards to primary caregivers. We, uh, made some changes to the odor standards, added a revocation process for special land use, and, um, updated the design standards, um, to add that primary caregiver requirement.
So, um, council, this has become, well, before, it was in front of the Planning Commission for a number of meetings, um, and meeting with our village planner. And it's come before council two meetings ago, um, where there was a consensus, so they go forward. And now we actually have to vote on it as a second reading. And if it's, if we adopt it, it becomes our official ordinance regarding medical marijuana zoning ordinance. So, um, is there discussion, concerns that council wishes to raise at this point in time? If not, we, well, we know it was very carefully covered at Planning Commission, and I think at our meeting, uh, two meetings ago. So, um, do I have a motion as to Ordinance 193.6? Motion made by President Pro Tem Dyke, supported by Councilmember Glasser, uh, to approve Ordinance 193.6. Any further discussion? Discussion at all? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Objections? Regular Agenda Item Number Four, Highland Park Bad Debt Expense Recovery Letter. If you read this thing, it's rather incredible. So. Uh, this, this is about as sad a tale as you could possibly have. And so it's been around since 2012? Before then? Um, well, Highland Park just wasn't paying its bill. And I don't have a lot of information about it, uh, other than, I think I'm aware that Highland Park is, has, is a community with very little in the way of revenue. So, there was, um, treatment plant for that city's water treatment plant, um, because it was creating a public health risk to its residents, and.
Which still has not been repaired.
It's never been, they've never done it. And then it's, then we're Seattle, I guess, it's payment history. It's paid less than 1% of its water service charges since 2012. And the sad, the sad news is that, um, they, we think that Kingsbrook was behind, the 11,374,300, if no payment is made, and by the end of the fiscal year 2023, it'll be 12,631,000. Um, and so it means that other communities are picking up, um, for Highland Park's non-payment. And so what's being asked by GLWA, which I'm sure is probably more unhappy with this situation than each of the communities carrying Highland Park, is a letter that would go to Governor Whitmer, essentially asking the state to pick it up or do something with it. And I, I have no idea whether the federal money coming, coming in, um, to the state by American Rescue Act, whether there's anything, uh, there is availability from those funds to pick this up is obviously an incredible bill. But, so, what, what is being asked by GLWA is, will we authorize, um, our village manager to essentially sign the proposed letter and send it on to the governor, who I'm sure will respond immediately? So it, it's, um, it's a gesture. Will there be a, a check coming from the state? Who knows? But obviously, it's a terrible problem. So, what's council's pleasure? Do we want Mr. Trent to send on? I mean, do you have a input on, on this, David?
Over and above the sending of the letter, which I think is a noble gesture for us to do, as I will be in attendance again tomorrow at the last day of the MML Capcom Conference. Tomorrow morning, we have the privilege of having breakfast with many legislators that will be joining us, and, uh, and as many legislators that represent our region where GLWA is supplying water. And with the multitude of billions that the state now has at its disposal, that it still hasn't figured out how to appropriate for infrastructure projects, et cetera, that, uh, I, I can't, I can't envision why they wouldn't be able to come up with $11 million to help pay off the Highland Park debt, because they certainly have made the special effort to take care of lead and service line replacements, not only in Flint, but also Ben Harbor. So let's have the state step up, take care of this issue with, uh, our friends in Highland Park, and, uh, reduce that, uh, that debt so that all the other communities that are part of GLWA don't have to have that encumbrance going further.
I mentioned approaching Senator Daley and Representative Powell for starters.
Starters and any, any other legislators that I'm familiar with that are in attendance tomorrow.
Genesee County, et cetera. Yeah, okay. Would we actually need a motion for this, Kim, do you think?
Census?
So. Yeah.
I don't have an issue with it.
So, get out your pen. Okay, well, thanks for presenting that. All those headaches. Going on to, let me just print it here. Regular Agenda Item Number Five, Kalan Water Main Relocation. And so, can you make a presentation to us, Manager Trent, with regard to Kalan?
Yes, following up on what we provided you at our last meeting, where we, uh, shared with you the status of the, um, water main being discovered in the improper location as an extension of the Drake Shire sub-development back in 2005, '07 era, that, uh, our friends at Rowe Professional Services came out last week and, uh, surveyed the lots as well as the proposed future right-of-way location. And, uh, one of the things that we discovered going through that process is that one of the pins on the back end of Lot 133 was in the wrong location. And so when our crew went out there a couple of weeks ago to look at the stakes and where the water main was constructed, and also. the water main was constructed, and also a little bit of confusion about what some of those stakes meant from as far as the house being staked out, 10-foot setbacks from the house and so on and so forth, that the appearance was that the water main was actually going under the proposed garage. Once that back pin was relocated and Roe confirmed that the property lines were where they were supposed to be, in reevaluating the the location of the water main to the house, we discovered that it's not going under the garage, but it's so close to the house and garage that the water main still needs to be relocated. You know, if something disastrous ever happened to that pipe, it would flood out the basement of that home. And there's just no room to do any work, you know, as close as that water main is to the proposed house. So I provided to you a sketch, a preliminary sketch that Roe has put together, disregard the typo that says where the existing eight-inch water main is located, that's an existing 12-inch water main. But they have the location of its current status in the right location. And so we basically are looking for a final sketch from Roe so that whoever we decide to contract with for relocating the the water main knows exactly where the property line for the right-of-way is and establish a 15-foot easement in that right-of-way and the water main would be located as close to the center of that easement as possible so that there's plenty of space for Mr. Dupree going forward to, you know, develop that future right-of-way for his property that's to the east, you know, at whatever point he decides to move forward with that project. Regular road width is about 24 feet, 12 feet for each direction, so there's still plenty of room in the right-of-way, you know, to not impact the the easement where the water main would be located.
Assuming that council were to approve the proposed resolution, I we had some discussion at the last meeting, I think as far as where the funds would come from, we have bottom line here 42,500, and those funds would come from.
I suggested at this point would be that we use some of our ARPA monies to cover that cost and have it be designated into the water fund to help cover this cost. And then going forward, if we're able to get any confirmation from title work that's still being investigated, to see was there ever an easement recorded on that property when it was just vacant land? So that's still a work in progress. We don't have an update on that yet. I have been in touch with our insurance company to just let them know that this is where we're at, to see if it's possible for us to file a claim. Based on what we know today, where we did find documentation on the final site plan that was approved by former village manager Jerry Oaks, that there was a designation for a future right-of-way that showed where the water main was supposed to be located. But whether or not an easement was ever created and recorded is still up in the air and that's something that we're hoping to find out through our title title search as well. Now, in this regard, Mr. Novak, who currently owns that future right-of-way, has graciously agreed to help resolve this issue and will give us an easement for putting the water main in that right-of-way because he's the owner of that property. And and Roe will create the the document for us to review and get it recorded at the county clerk's office.
Jim, have you seen this preliminary?
Just received this sketch early Monday afternoon.
Mr. Snyder, as of right now, construction has started on Lot 133. The sewer and water was tapped in and I believe the basement was dug. There should be no reason moving forward that we would be holding up anything other than at the point when we actually move the water main or relocate it.
It'd be a lot easier to move a 12-inch water main before there was a whole structure there.
It's too late. It's already done. The the hole's already dug, so.
Sure, you can swing over a basement wall.
I thought this water main was where it was proposed now. That's why I always thought it was in that, you know, that right-of-way lot. And, you know, even though there are all the research that we've done, there is no title work that shows that there's a place for that.
Sure.
And we've, you know, I've had my title company look twice.
Yeah, I don't, my opinion is I don't think we hold up their project. I think we make the commitment to spend the $42,500 to get this project done so it doesn't interfere with Mr. Novak's business. The homeowner can get into town. It's an error that's happened 20 years ago that, you know, there's many new faces since then and it's not their fault, it's not our fault, it's our problem to fix it, not his.
Already received 146,000 plus or minus, and then we'll get another 146,000 next year.
Okay. That was my opinion. And let's make sure when the easement comes in.
It's going to be brought to council.
Okay.
Yeah, that's one of the the things that we've learned going through this process, that that's a good catch-all to make sure that we have council approve all easements just so that we have a record of it in a council meeting so that it's easy for us to look up. You know, a lot of municipalities do do that, but you know, that's that's going to be our procedure going forward.
I mean, and Brian's Brian's been great with it. I mean, I've looked at some of the maps with, I mean, you fight that issue every day with little lines.
The water main is not.
I mean, it was never documented in the past and.
I mean, I'm just.
And you keep updating as these problems pop, he updates and updates and updates. I mean.
And unfortunately, we didn't know that it was going to be in the way until the lot was stayed.
Sure.
When we got the mis-dig, that's when we're like, that's not right.
Right.
But it's not where it's supposed to be. At least we can't find anything. It needs to be moved or not moved, but relocated.
I believe that Jerry was Jerry Oaks was not the manager at the time this happened. Sally McCray was acting manager and I thought it was her that signed the site plan?
Actually, well, both of them had their fingers in the pie. You know, she signed off as clerk at that time, but Jerry signed off on the actual site plan. Ms. McCray signed off on the Myler prints that we have in our possession.
Before he became ill, the the in order to record an easement, prepare an easement and record it, you have to have your meets and bounds. In other words, surveyed, is the meets and bounds for the easement, is that already set forth in the site plan? So you can off of the site plan, you can actually prepare a document to be recorded with the Register of Deeds. You have to have a legal description.
Exactly.
Yeah. Is that in the site plan?
No.
So that has to be done also.
All the site plan shows is that there's a future right-of-way that's directly across from Dawn Drive. And that's where it's sketched in where the water main should have been located. Obviously, we're approximately 20 feet off from where it should have been.
So we have to retain services of Duffler, who's the best surveyor around, to for him to do, I mean, he has to do a survey, right? We have to have that.
As contractors, they they have their own surveying crew. So they've come and done that. They're going to put together that legal description for the easement. We'll review that with Mr. Novak and concur on the accuracy of it and then make arrangements to get it recorded. We're learning that whoever the grantee is, is ultimately responsible for taking it to the county courthouse and getting it recorded with the Register of Deeds. Well, we would be the, Mr. Novak's the grantor, we're the grantee, so we're responsible for getting it recorded.
That's easy enough to do.
Sometimes the builder or the grantor might do it, you know, but in this case, we're going to make sure.
My office is usually at the courthouse right across the street from Register of Deeds at least once a week, so we'd be happy to record it. Save somebody a trip. Okay. All right, well, any further discussion from council is a big decision to make. I think the discussion that's been had so far makes sense and is substantive and yeah, mistake happened a long time ago. I'm guessing that Jerry was probably ill at the time, but must have still been on board.
I'm still engineering firm. That's really ultimately shouldn't be true to happen, not your your council.
Yeah.
Because I paid a lot of money to engineering fees to make sure this isn't happening for the village and that's ultimately who was at fault for this problem now.
Yeah, sounds like, mm-hmm. Yeah, thank you for that explanation.
But they don't make it whatever, the mistake doesn't cost, doesn't make cost everybody else.
Yeah. You noticed.
I think there's, you know, other fingers in the pie, you know, as Mr. Novak indicated, you know, we had Roe Professional Services out there during the Drake Shire project. So something obviously went amiss that there wasn't, you know, an oversight of where this water main, you know, critical piece of infrastructure got located. But by the same token, whoever the contractor was that actually installed it, you know, should have had a print that specified where it's supposed to go. And you know, there's something on the final site plan print that shows it's supposed to be in the right-of-way. And so something happened there with lots of vacant land where they just cut across of.
Yeah.
And so instead of going directly across from Dawn Drive, they took a stub that was 20 feet to the south of Dawn Drive and just went right across the street and at a slight angle across what is now Lot 133, we end up with this conflict.
Sure, I think the Stoop Brothers were the developers at that time.
That is true.
If we're going to do a motion on this, how should the motion be structured and what would the wording be?
And I apologize that I forgot to add that tidbit of information.
Yeah.
We acquired several quotes, one of which was significantly less than everybody else. We had three quotes that were in the $20,000 range. We, two of those, well, actually, three of the vendors, everybody that quoted in the twenties, came out and saw firsthand what we were up against and what was involved. We've identified a company from Auburn Hills, Superior Excavating, that we're recommending as of the information we had when the council packet was put together last Thursday to do the work. They have a substantial resume, which is included in your packet too, that shows many municipalities that they've done work for over the years. It's a company that's about 50 years old now, started by the current owner's father. So he followed in his dad's footsteps and has been running the firm for the last 15 years since his dad passed away. They have several crews, so they're able to address this project as early as next week so that it would be completed by the end of next week. We have the material on reserve, so the material can be ordered pending your folks' approval of the project tonight. Just to advise you, Mr. Novak gave me a verbal quote last Thursday. He has not had a chance to put anything in writing. In our conversation last week, when he said he was able to do the work, it did not include pressure testing, which is one of our requirements. He has indicated that he'd be willing to do the pressure testing and, you know, he would do do it for an overall price of $10,000. Now, while that sounds very generous, one of my concerns, and not anything against Mr. Novak or the quality of his work, we we know Mr. Novak's been an integral part of our community for many years with all the developments that have taken place. But I I'm concerned that in light of what's transpired and that he's the owner of Lot 133 and doing the work for Mr. Powell and his family, that we might be better served by having a, let's say, third party actually perform the work, even though it's going to cost us more. But I just think that it takes that onus off of Mr. Novak to to do that work and that we have outside parties actually perform it.
See, I think just the opposite on that.
No, no offense to you, Jim, I hope you you don't take it the wrong way, but.
See, I think just the opposite on that. Mr. Novak knows the layout of the land. He knows the line. He he's already doing the excavation and stuff around there. He doesn't have to move, his bill's considerably cheaper because he doesn't have to move his equipment from the city to here.
Oh, hang on, Jim, because I got a quote from somebody else and it wasn't put in the packet because it wasn't put in there on time. So we got to be fair here, okay? I got a $23,000 quote, who I would actually hire those people over all these people and it didn't get put in the packet. I'm the guy that has to deal with the people. I'm not that, there's a health risk at at cost here. When you're taking a water main out of service, reduced pressure is going to be over in Drake Shire and Kailin, and that's the exact same water main that was out of service for over a month last summer. So I don't want a repeat of the water quality issue that I went through last summer. So we really, the DPW needs to hire somebody with some sort of professionalism that will come in and maybe teach us something. So we, my recommendation is for Superior, it's that way we can get it over and done with. There's a supply shortage, there's an employee shortage. If we keep trying to get more quotes and bring more stuff to the table, it's going to, the ship's going to sail. But my preferred person that I would hire did not get his quote in by last Thursday. Is that correct?
Correct.
So we can't go back. We need to make a decision with these three people here. I'm sorry, but fair is fair.
I did give a per blessing last week, so like I said, I will charge for that. Thank you, Smith, then. I'm trying to be nice. If we don't want to save money, then that's fine. I might as well make some money, so not a problem.
See, it's a problem.
This water main was out of service last year for over a month and we had water quality issues from Drake Shire and my crew, my staff.
That's why it wasn't done because you said that you did certain things in the way. And that's why it was.
Hey, I'm not BMJ, you work for BMJ. I don't work for BMJ. You bid at the job and you decided to not do what was on that bid. I'm not going to.
You did not, you did not. You did not respond to that.
Yeah.
So not a problem.
So my, I'm the I'm the water operator for the village. Everything that happens, they don't come after all of you guys or the contractor. They come after me if something isn't right. There, this is, I think that we have been moving forward very fast on this and we can we can get it done within the next month. But there's a process to do this without harming people's life and safety. It's their water.
So the 23 houses that are in there or 24 houses that I installed, like that's their water, it's not installed, right? But took every pressure test that was done, right?
Our water quality problem last year was in Drake Shire, off of the same main. And my department had to work with engineers to fix it. And it was not our job. So I I just feel we should hires, I feel we deserve to hire somebody that's.
Getting back to the original homeowner's request, he'd like to move forward. We have three quotes in front of us and we've never accepted as a council verbal quotes. So if we want to move forward with this, we have to make a decision tonight and select a contractor with the quotes that we have in front of us. Like, I under, I understand.
You give verbal.
Like, I understand what Jim is saying, you know, but we we don't have a quote to consider in front of us. And I mean, I I would hope. to consider in front of us, and, I mean, I, I would hope, Jim, that you would want to achieve the same aim and help your homeowner here.
We, we, we said go forward, so it's not hoping anybody, so we got time, so.
So, um, what, I, but Mr. Novak appears to be presenting to us, is, is council willing to pay him $10,000 for the easement, or it just doesn't go forward? That's what it sounds like.
We're gonna have to hire Row to oversee that then, because my crew is not gonna oversee that, and we're saving a ton of money by not bringing the engineers in, because we're the ones with the water license, I have four water operators that, you know, will oversee the project.
How much would Row charge us?
I don't know, they, they actually told us, they actually told us not to. You know, there's a process here, we still have to go through and get a permit from Eagle. You can't just take a water main apart and move it. I mean, there's a process that, you know, my concern is the health and safety of my residents.
It will, it will, it will be a... You can, you can negotiate, and we're not gonna negotiate.
Remember, you'll see it the next item on the agenda, there's an employee shortage and a, and a supply shortage out there, so...
If there's no easement, we can't move forward.
That's true.
We're not gonna negotiate easements. So, I said, I told them two weeks, and Mr. Powell, you've had to negotiate an easement price with Mr. Novak.
How long is our equipment on hold for, or, from, uh...
So I, I purchased the equipment myself, or the, the pipes, because we saved 6% right there. Contractors will jack the price up, but whenever we do hire a contractor, the contractor still has to touch base with the supplier to make sure that he's getting the parts that he wants. I just went and put them on hold. And I can't, I can't buy the parts until the contractor approves the list, because there may be something in there that he wants. So that's why we're paying, that's why that's a separate item. Normally that would be together, but because of the situation, I decided to try to save, well, we saved 6% on taxes.
Well, the way things stand right now, I think, Tim's correct, we can't move forward.
Yeah, I wish we were moving forward.
What I would anticipate at our next meeting will be three items for action. One would be the approval of the cost of the easement, then the purchase of the materials as Brian has outlined, and then the decision on which contractor we would use to do the project.
Sorry, Mr. Powell. Okay, we're tabling that issue, reg, regular agenda item number six, leaf machine purchase. Speaking of money. Okay, who wants to make a presentation? So, so we have the correspondence from Brian, and then we have the memo from our treasurer as far as budgetary impact, and then we have memorandum and suggested action from our manager. So who wants to take this? Can we buy a couple of these?
That's what I thought after Kim's financial analysis, I, I thought, let's buy two and maybe we could buy three and we'll do the whole county.
Right, yeah. That's what I was thinking, so, well, somebody take the ball and run with it.
Well, if, if I can just give a brief summation, you, you have the, Brian's analysis of the cost for repair. We did have a local machine shop come out and actually look at the machine as well to see if there was any possibility of somebody locally being able to do a miracle and actually make it repairable at a much lower cost, and after a review of the issues with the machine and some of the bearings, et cetera, it would just be cost prohibitive to have an engineer go through and, you know, basically tear it apart, try to do a design, what needs to be fixed, what needs to be machined, et cetera. We already have that from the folks from Bell, Bell Equipment, and so our recommendation is going to be that when we come back in April, that we're gonna have not only the, the old leaf back, but some other items that we would wanna dispose of at the local county auction that's held up at the fairgrounds here in the spring. And so that really, so basically, we're looking to council for direction on, do you desire for us to be able to continue this service for our citizens? Do we wanna pick up leaves every autumn during the fall season? If your decision is yes, we wanna provide that service, our DPW department is more than able to do that, we just need a new piece of equipment to accomplish that, and the best methodology for us to do that is to acquire the proposed piece of equipment that you have in front of you tonight at a $93,000 plus cost, and, but has outlined, you know, one of the benefits is that we can do more leaf peak, more leaf pickup faster, more efficiently, with the less manpower. And, and coupled with that, one of the concerns that you folks raised was, well, if we're gonna do leaf pickup, where can we dispose of the leaves? And Wees Legon has agreed to provide access to her field for us to dump the leaves there, and then she does her manicuring of all the leaves that are there and does her composting for fertilizer for her field.
So last year, the leaf machine, the last three years, the leaf machine has been giving us a lot of trouble. Jim actually witnessed three or four different times, he was down at the garage, and one time he encouraged us not to even use it, but because I have such a dedicated staff, we rolled with it anyway, and we were able to make it through the season. But again, in November, I called for parts for this thing, and if I would have ordered them in November, it would have not been here till March. So as of right now, even if we order parts, which they paid $16,000 for the machine, it's not worth putting $23,000 into it. But tomorrow, if I get to order a machine, it still won't be here till September. That was before the war between Russia and Ukraine, okay? So, um, it's the only place in the state, it's the same place we buy our sweepers from, and they have mobile mechanics, which is a huge deal for us, because we, we don't employ a mechanic or anything like that. I know it's a, it's a, it's a expensive purchase, but I feel it's what we need to do if we're gonna continue the, the service.
Well, it, it seems that unless we're making a decision this evening, or in the very, very near future, that if we're gonna continue to do leaf pickup, we have to move on it at this point. So for, ready to make a decision, we're not gonna do it, we don't have to buy this piece of equipment. If we are going to continue, which we've done for many years, and it's something we've discussed on back and forth a little bit on, then it seems we need this equipment, and from a financial standpoint, it would be an installment purchase contract, if you carefully read our treasurer's memorandum. In, in some respects, you save money, and years, say, first year, you save approximately $9,500, and years two through 11, additional costs would be approximately $1,500 annually. And we do have room to do the installment contract as far as our financing. So that's the decision we have to make.
I think we should continue going to help the county.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, our, our citizens pay a lot of money in property taxes, and it's to give them something, yes, it's an expensive item, but if you approach it from this standpoint, it's not gonna be too big a financial hit.
I also feel like we have a lot of large mature trees along our streets, and that, without proper equipment to pick that up, I'm sure would, you guys would spend a lot of time just working to clear the streets and the storm drains and all of that.
So when I started, you know, 17 years ago, or whatever, a long time ago, like K Lynn and McIntosh, they didn't have leaves. Now they do, you know, so, I mean, it's gonna be like that in 10 years with Drake Shire and all that adding on. So we, I am thinking about the future instead of right now with this. So, you know, it, it, it takes two guys to operate instead of three, and, you know, it's got a, a control center where we're not walking behind the machine, that's twisted ankles, you know, because we're always falling and tripping on the curb, you know, it's, it's just a safer, more productive machine, and I think that that is what this town needs with the amount of leaves that we collect, so. And it does not affect the truck being ready to plow snow or any of that, so it's a separate unit that you pull, and you can have your truck ready for snow, to where now we have to take everything apart and, you know, put it back together if it gets, we get a nice, you know, day before our ending date, you know?
I should wonder if that would be there before the fall, right?
It'll be, if I order it tomorrow, they're, they're saying September, so barely enough time. I mean, I'm not gonna lie to you, I'm, there's, there's, there's a supply shortage, I think you know that with your line of work, and there's employees that, nobody has employees for some reason.
And even though they're saying September, like you said, with the war going on, it could jump?
Well, I was worried about, I was, I was worried about the trucker, the, you know, March 1st with the US truckers, well, then the war started, so now I'm worried about the war, you know, and that does affect...
I'd still worry about the truckers with the great loss. You're all crazy.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
This, this, no one also is gonna be a lot cleaner as far as the dust factor too, right? I mean, you've had issues with the, the truck pulling it, that we spent money to repair because of the, the dust and the particles of the leaves that got stuck down in the HVAC system.
Yep, yep, that's correct. So with it being a separate unit, that just helps out better.
Any storage issues with it?
Uh, we don't, obviously, we don't have a place to store it, it's gonna sit outside. I mean, I talked to David, we should probably look for someplace to rent to store it or something, or, you know, I, I don't know where we're at with the future, most of our stuff is outside, I, we just don't have any room. So that, that is a, 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 a problem. That's the worst thing for our stuff now, is it sits outside for 10 months out of the year, you know, 11 months.
And at short notice and maybe start squeezing some money for working it into your budget to get some building.
Discussing that for years, unfortunately.
We did talk about it, it's pretty scary.
Maybe if we get DNR grants and we have those buildings that look good, maybe we can rent you some space.
Wouldn't the addition be like 100 grand, something like that?
Uh, if we could do it, we could jump on it. It's, you know, the, the buildings were built when everything was small, you know, we've, we've knocked out our doors and made them taller because everything new is big, you know, so, but there is no, we get all the important stuff inside, but usually, you know, there's stuff outside. We do need to think about doing something, even if it's a cold storage or if we rent some, someplace, you know, which...
Go over it or something?
Yeah, like a lean-to or something, we should probably look into something.
I was just wondering if we can maybe put that in the price to take care of it.
So do we have a motion on that? And we, actually, if, if we're moving ahead on this, we need two motions. One would be for approval of purchasing the leaf machine, and secondly, the agreement for land use. Need a motion on that as well, right, Kim?
Correct.
So, do we have a motion?
I'll look at a motion. Bell Equipment Company to purchase Bell Spartan Leaf Pro and Leaf Pro self-contained leaf machine at the cost of $93,849.
Motion made by Councilmember Conca, supported by Councilmember Glasser, and stated on the record to purchase the leaf machine at $93,849. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Objections? Second would be agreement for land use. I, I do wanna mention that the agreement was acceptable in terms of, you know, contract language, except there's a major typo. On the second to last paragraph, adherents of local, state, and federal laws, second line down, agreement shall be invalidated by any court, and it says of administrative ruling, I'm sure they meant to say or administrative ruling, because a ruling by a court is not administrative, but various agencies like Eagle, whatever, they're, that's administrative, so it's supposed to say by any court or administrative ruling. I'm, I'm willing, I'm willing to sign it, and maybe just cross out of, put or above and initial it, I mean, so we can move forward right away, but that does need to be corrected. I just wanted to mention that. So do we have a, a motion on the agreement for land use with...
Make the motion to approve the land use agreement with McGon Farms LLC for the leaf disposal as outlined in the contract with the changes of Mr. Snyder had just mentioned.
I'll support that.
Motion made by Councilmember Alex, supported by Councilmember Conca, to approve the agreement for land use, as indicated with the change that I suggested. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agreement for land use is approved. I'll write in the change and it should be fine, and if Wees has any problem with that, we can always redraft it with that correction. Okay, that takes care of regular agenda item number six, and a regular agenda item number seven, resolution 22 hyphen 03 hyphen 02, support submission of natural resources grant application, which we discussed in the public hearing.
Mr. President, if I can just add a comment that this is kind of a redundancy of what you did last month. I kinda jumped the gun, not realizing that we actually had to have the public hearing before you adopted the resolution, so we're essentially, in one sense, rescinding what we did a month ago, approving this resolution tonight, and that helps capture the public hearing that was held earlier today.
Bells and whistles right now. Yeah. So we approved it in our last meeting, but any further discussion, comments from council? If not, we need a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll make the motion that we approve resolution number 22 dash 03 dash 02, supporting the submission of a natural resources trust fund grant application.
Support.
Motion by Councilmember Steffler, supported by Councilmember Glasser, to approve resolution 22 hyphen 03 hyphen 02. Any further discussion? Roll call?
Steffler?
Aye.
Alec?
Aye.
Colka?
Aye.
Dyke?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Resolution 22 hyphen 03 02 is unanimously approved. That completes our regular agenda for this evening. Now is for public comment time for any issue that was not on our regular agenda this evening, any public comment for non-agenda.
This is regarding the, the road commission, we're proposing to put on a millage for the roads, and it's been a discussion on our board, you know, what the municipalities would like to do, and my personal opinion has been to put it on the ballot, it'd be a 1.8 mils, which, how much tax, it's already too high, but I think, in my opinion, that the voters should vote on it to have better roads, and then if it was in the village, the village would receive 100% of those fees. And I was just wanting to get some directions, what, you know, your board thought of putting that on the ballot, and what your thoughts was. It'd be a countywide millage, but it stays, stays here. It'd be a countywide millage, but it stays here.
I was gonna say, we don't have a road fund now.
Yeah, exactly.
But there's, you know, and for the rest of municipalities that didn't do it, you know, the townships, what they was afraid of is they wasn't gonna get enough sharing of it. And our proposal this time is be a 70-30 split. The townships would, you don't have 70% of the money that came in to keep in their township, and the road commission would keep the other 30 to do, you know, on the main roads. But, you know, I kind of wanted to get a, you know, consensus, you know, for my vote to say, you know, but that's where I've stood on it. But, you know, we have, one board member does not think that that should be even brought to the voters, and I think it should be brought to the voters' attention.
When we have faced similar situations where, like, we were going to get that bill, and oh, yeah, that you have, and we, there was gonna have to be a substantial millage increase, and we had to put it on the ballot. And 1.8 is big enough that I think the people should have to vote on it. But I'm also congratulating in terms of being proactive.
I mean, it's still up to the voters, but that's the way I've felt on it. And, you know, I just, you know, we have a, not sure if we're gonna do it tomorrow, or if we're gonna do it next week, but, you know, we're, you know, just wanted to make sure that, you know, I'm speaking for, you know, at least the councils and, you know, the townships, you know, what they're thinking of, you know, on that vote, so. So, it sounds like there's consensus.
Appreciate you coming and keeping us in the loop with it.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're supportive. And say hi to Mr. Jastek. Any event, anybody else with public comments for non-agenda items? I thank you for bringing that to us, Jim. So, Manager Trent, anything you want to bring to council?
Just a quick update on the summer intern program that you folks authorized us to move forward with. Our mechanical engineering student did confirm last week that she's all on board with us. And the resume of Sam Lovell that was shared with you in the packet, Sam opted to enhance his resume regarding elections, and the county clerk scarfed him up. So, we ended up having to review some other resumes that Kathy Dickens provided, and we got confirmation yesterday from Josh Hellebuck, who is an Almont High graduate, and going to Northwood University, majoring in business, minor in finance, and I think he'll be a fine addition as well to our team. So, he confirmed yesterday as well, so they'll be coming on board late May to help us out for a 10-week program.
Kim, anything to bring to council?
Yeah, the DDA Board, DDA Director Shaw indicated that when she did a poll of the board members, that April 5th would work best for them for the RRC joint annual meeting. So, if there's no objections from council, I'll have Caitlin come, and we can do the joint meeting with the planning commission, DDA, and council.
True. I bet you everybody actually showed up. They usually don't, but, yeah.
We can accommodate.
We'll see. Standing room only.
Yeah.
Okay, so that'd be our next meeting.
Correct.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, sir.
Wayne?
Just that we kind of look at a plan to try to maybe cover that new piece of equipment, obviously, because, again, supply, of trying to get something bought. By September, I think we need to make sure we look into something, start planning ahead before it gets here.
And we're making an investment.
Right, to store it.
We're making an investment, and, yeah, and protecting it makes sense.
That may take six or seven months to get to.
Yeah. Would the leaf machine fit in anybody's garage, you think?
Weeze's. I don't know if you've seen her new one or not, she's got airport hangar doors on it, full up like that.
Wow.
Yeah, there was nothing in it either.
Ask her. We'll pay monthly rent or something. Anything else, Wayne? Tim? Mindy?
No.
Jim?
Since you're here, Brian, where's the vac truck back?
It will be any day now. I just got an update last week, they were putting it together, or I guess two weeks ago, they were putting it together last week. It's been a long time. Again, that's the employee in the supply shortage, steel was really hard to get at first. And I don't know if it's because it sat there for so long, but there was issues with the battery and a couple hydraulic leaks, so they fixed those two. And, you know, I've been in touch with them at least once a month, or once every couple weeks, because we've had to hire it out, had that out a couple times, two or like three times, I think, four times, so.
Okay. The only other thing I have is the code enforcement. You know, we got stuff on here going on a year old that just says ongoing. I mean, I don't know, I think I've met the code enforcement person once since I've been in office. Can we ask her to be at the next meeting, or him?
Her.
Her? Yeah, I don't know how active she is.
I'll have to double-check some of those items. Some of it she just keeps on because it's a reference to her when she first identified the issue. But a lot of those things that are, you know, like tall grass or whatever, those are obsolete right now.
I asked about it.
I'm going with the parking ones and the blight ones.
She did clear a few off when I asked about it before, but, yeah, I've noticed that, too. There's a few lingering ones.
She has reference ones that she's just holding for reference? Maybe move it off of the enforcement report and have a reference report below it, or...
Let's see if we can get that cleared up and reevaluate. And since, you know, you're having the joint meeting with the DDA and PC, as well as, you know, the follow-up action on the water main, maybe we can arrange for her to come for the second meeting in April if necessary.
Yes.
Okay, very good.
And then, can we just make a little note for the May 17th meeting, since it'll be right after water bills are due, to have an update on the Kingsbrook bill for that meeting?
See, why not?
Sure.
Jackie?
I'm all set, thank you.
We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.